Good evening, everyone. Happy Monday. And let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. The time is 5:01 PM and the date is Monday, June 24th, 2024. And we will start this meeting off as we do all of our meetings with the moment of silence. Please. Madam President, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible). America, I think to the Republic, to the stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever creating justice for all.
All right. We will read out the rules of civility in the quorum which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the Chair and should not interrupt the Speaker. Public comments shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from this audience, stamping defeat, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, if you plan to speak on an item, you shall complete a comment card for each agenda item that you want to address, which shall include your full name, address, and the number of agenda item. And if you don't fill it out properly, you will not be recognized. Thank you all very much. We will now dive into our agenda. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just want to note, under public hearing quasi-judicial, we have a request from the applicant for a continuance of that item to a future City Commission meeting. And given that it's not being requested for a date certain, it will have to be re-advertised. And I understand that the applicant has agreed to take care of that. So when you get to that item, you will be voting on the continuance.
Okay. Very good. All right. Item 6.1, we'll have an overview presentation of the work of the Palm Beach County Commission on Ethics from Gina Lavec. Is Lavec welcome?
Lavec.
Okay, all right. Almost got it. That was my second guess. Ms. Lavec.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gina Lavec, and I am delighted to be here today to discuss the vital role of the Commission on Ethics in fostering and enhancing the public's trust in government. The Commission on Ethics was established in 2010 following a recommendation by a grand jury in 2009 for ethics reform in local government in Palm Beach County, and I've had the privilege of being with that office since inception. Our primary responsibility is to provide oversight, transparency, and accountability for over 12,000 elected officials, public employees, and advisory board members within our county. Additionally, we have limited jurisdiction over lobbyists, principals, employers of lobbyists, and vendors operating within our county. It's important to note that the Commission operates independently from any county and municipal government organization or influence. Our Commission consists of five esteemed community members selected by independent groups, ensuring impartial and fair oversight. All county governments and municipalities within our jurisdiction are subject to the ethics ordinances that we enforce. The Code of Ethics, outlined in a comprehensive 12-page document, serves as a critical framework to ensure public officials and employees conduct themselves with integrity, independence, and impartiality. The Code explicitly prohibits the use of public office for personal gain, emphasizing the importance of public trust and accountability. A cornerstone of our ethics program is education and prevention. We prioritize ongoing training initiatives, providing advisory opinions, and strive to establish a culture of ethics within government institutions. Our programs are designed to enhance public trust in government operations, demonstrating our commitment to ethical governance. Our dedicated staff offers accessible training sessions and provides advisory services, having issued over 536 advisory opinions to date. The proactive approach aims to prevent ethical lapses and ensures ethical conduct within our community. While we possess statutory authority to enforce penalties such as letters of reprimand and fines up to $500 per violation, our primary focus remains on education, educating individuals under our jurisdiction to prevent violations before they occur. We prioritize transparency by making all of our advisory opinions, gift forms, voting conflict forms, and complaints readily available on our website under the Databases tab. In conclusion, I want to commend each of you for your dedicated work. As you continue to fulfill your responsibilities, please remember the importance of ethical considerations. Ask first, act later. Should anyone require further information or assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out to our office through our website or our local phone number, as we are here to answer any and all of your questions. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Lavec, for that presentation. Did I get it right that time?
You did.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Third time's a charm. Okay, we'll now move to the consent calendar, items 7.1 through 7.7. Any questions, comments on consent? If not, I will entertain a motion. This is general comment. General, okay, all right. We do have a card on item 7.7. Michael Cleveland?
Good evening, everyone. Michael Cleveland, West Palm. Mayor, I note that there's a difference of dollar amount between the Platteville City and the South Olive. I understand it may be good cause for it, but I simply would say to you that Platteville City may be in more need of funds than the South Olive area. They have children or that really may need these services. I simply would ask that that figure either be matched equally, or I'd like to find out a good reason why it's $9,000 for one and $10,005 for the other. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any, there are no other cards. Any, if there are no comments or questions on consent, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the items on consent.
Second.
It's been moved to second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Now, we do, as City Administrator previously stated, with respect to item 8.1, well, you know what, we better swear in all witnesses first. Commissioners, I need you to make your disclosures. We'll begin with you, President. Ward?
As to item 8.1, I have had experte communications with the applicant and a representative of another resident, as well as received written communications from residents in the area. I have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, have not received expert opinions. As to items 8.2 and 8.3, I have not had experte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
As to item 8.1, I have had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. As to items 8.2 and 8.3, I have not had experte communications, have not received written communications, have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, and have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Peruzzi?
Thank you. As to item 8.1, I have had experte communications with a representative of the applicant and with an objecting homeowner, and I have received written communication from surrounding neighbors. I have not conducted an investigation, have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. As to items 8.2 and 8.3, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, nor have I received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record.
Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
As to item 8.1, I have had experte communications with the applicant, as well as a neighbor. I have received written communications from neighbors. I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. As to item 8.2 and 8.3, I have not had experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. I will make my disclosures in the event I need to vote if there's a tie. So as to item 8.1, I have had experte communications with the applicant, I have received written communications from various parties, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received any expert opinions. As to items 8.2 and 8.3, I have not had any experte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. Now, Madam Clerk, can you swear in all witnesses, please?
Would everyone wishing to speak on items 8.1 through 8.3, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Okay. Now, with respect to 8.1, Commissioners, we need to vote on the desire to continue this matter. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to continue item 8.1 to a date within 60 days hereof.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.2, Resolution Number 132-24, a request by Harvey E. Oyer, third of Chutzen Bowen LLP, on behalf of WPB Fern Holdings LLC, to abandon and vacate a 5,689 square foot or 0.1300 acre alleyway located at South Dixie to the east, South Quadro Boulevard to the west, Gardenia Street to the south, and Fern Street to the north, for the revised appraisal value of $1,650,000.
Good evening, everyone. Meredith Lay with Chutzen Bowen in for Harvey Oyer, also representing the applicant who is here with me tonight, if you have any questions for him. The request before you tonight is an alley abandonment under Resolution 132-24. The alley abandonment is for, the site in question is the public alleyway between Dixie Highway and Quadro Boulevard on the 400th block of Fern Street. It's surrounded by a broad mix of uses. To the north, there's a commercial building and the Whitney. To the west is the FEC Railway with the bright line just slightly to the north of it. And beyond the tracks is the FAU Theater and the Ballet Village. South of the property or the site is a couple of multifamily buildings and a surface parking lot that services the Marriott Hotel. And to the east is AT&amp;T Building and an urban open space. The project is zoned Quadro Garden District 10, and it is an incentive-receiving area, meaning that it can rise to a height of 25 stories and get additional TDRs with, get additional floor area with TDRs. This is a close-up of the alley whose abandonment will allow the proposed development to be constructed on top of it. As you can see, the project is pretty much a full block assemblage with the new, for the new building. The building there on the northeast corner is the former Florida Public Utilities Company, which is recently designated as a historic structure in the local register back in December. That building is going to remain as it is, but the land was included in the project's site area for the purposes of development rights and incentives, and that contributes to the overall project. But to add in, the project wasn't, the building was incorporated into the site area but will remain as it is. All the affected property owners required to give consent to the petition have done so. This slide summarizes the project as an eight-story mixed-use building with 340 multifamily units. There's about 20,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial. And in the, within, the mix of the multifamily includes four garden-style apartments, 60 micro-units, and 22 affordable workforce housing units. There's a mix of studios, ones, twos, and three-bedroom apartments. There's a seven-story parking garage. It has about 586 parking spaces. The parking garage is lined by, with apartment units from, so to screen it from view from the street frontages. The project required about 89,000 square feet of TDRs, and the applicant actually acquired more than that, about 109,000 square feet. And so there's going to be a surplus of about 21,000 square feet of unused TDRs on this, in the applicant's bank. The project will bring with it 22 workforce housing affordable units, affordable to those within the 60% to 100% AMI range. It's there, I should note that 16 are provided, were, 16 were required, and the applicant is actually proposing more than that, 22, provided onsite. To my knowledge, this is the first project to participate in the city's recently adopted DMP housing incentive program, and it's great that they're actually providing all of the units on, within the project. The project also includes car and bike-sharing stations, and as mentioned, the FPUC building has been added to the Historic Places Registry. The block will also be beautified with new streetscaping, lighting, new furnishings, hardscape, and will kind of erase that sense of blight that we all experience passing by that block now. And finally, the cost of any utilities and upgrades and relocations will be accomplished at the cost to the developer and none to the city. Here's what the project will look like once it's completed. This is looking southeast, and you can see the lagoon in the back, the background in 1 and 2 City Plaza. The ground floor will include about 11,000 square feet of commercial along Quadro and another 3,000 square feet on Fern Street. The rooftop garage will have a private amenity space, but there'll also be another public open space, a garden courtyard in between the FPUC building and the new development to kind of integrate those two buildings. There's also another 4,500 square feet of commercial on the opposite corner, so in a sense, all four frontages of this block will be activated. The applicant obtained, as you read, an appraisal for the property in the amount of $1.65 million and has agreed to compensate the city in that amount. Staff recommends approval of the request, and on June 12th, the Downtown Action Committee recommended approval of the alley abandonment and approved the site plan. Here are the standards for the alley abandonment in section, Chapter 78 of the city's Code of Ordinances. There are 10, excuse me, 10 standards, which some of them I went over kind of implicitly through my presentation, so I won't go through each one in detail. But I do want to emphasize point number nine, that all the utilities that have to be relocated will be done at the expense of the applicant. So at this point, I'm gonna, I'll go ahead and start wrapping up by saying this project is actually finally at this stage, and we're very happy to be at this point, because they actually, the developer submitted an application two years ago for a high-rise. So it's been a really long road to get to where we are right now. This is clearly not a high-rise, but it's a great building and a strong project that fits within the context of the existing development on the north and the south of Quadro Boulevard. We've also been through the process of designated, designating a historic building, relocating to previously designated structures to new sites within the city, and we're very proud of what the result of this product is, project is, and we hope that you will vote to approve it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant before we call staff up? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for the presentation. Can you talk a little bit about what your timeline would be if we approve this tonight? For that, I'll go ahead and ask Phil Bronstein to come up and speak. He's with the development group on that.
Phil Bronstein, 231 Palmetto Lane, West Palm Beach. We would expect the development to commence sometime within the next year. We have to work through this with the city on getting our permits and everything else filed and approved.
Okay, any other questions, comments before you're from staff? Okay, thank you for that presentation. Stand by, staff. What say ye?
Good evening. Claudia Lavec, City Revendisenter. It will be a very short presentation, because the applicant has actually provided most of the information. You know the location of the alley abandonment they're requesting to abandon, the proposed development where there was, that we'll be having in this site, and the criteria, criteria where this application, how this application was evaluated, which was based on Chapter 78, Article 7. They also provided public notice in accordance to the Section 78, 215 of the City Code of Ordinances. And as the applicant mentioned, the Downtown Action Committee did review the proposed development on June 12th. They approved the development, and they also recommended approval for the alley abandonment. And the staff also recommends approving the Resolution Number 132-24.
Very good. Any questions for staff? Any other comments generally? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 132-24, based upon the findings that the right-of-way is no longer needed for any public purpose, and that the abandonment complies with the criteria set forth in Section 78-217 of the city's Code of Ordinances.
It's been moved in second at discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 8.3, Resolution Number 133-24, a request by Zach Young of Young Capital Ventures LLC on behalf of Nora Hotel Owner LLC and NDT Development LLC, to abandon and vacate the 6,333 square-foot terminus portion of 11th Street, generally located south of Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, west of Spruce Avenue, north of North Railroad Avenue, and east of the Florida East Coast FEC Railroad, for the revised appraisal value of $170,979.07.
Good evening. Not Zach Young, but I am representing the owner and here on behalf of Zach Young and the Nora Development Group. The site in question, and, the site in question is the westernmost portion of the 11th Street right-of-way between North Railroad Avenue and the FEC right-of-way. It's surrounded by vacant land to the north and the east. There's an active railroad to the west. To the south, the Nora developers are actually in active construction for the adaptive reuse and new construction of Phase 1 of the Nora District. The development right now comprises of one, two, and three-bed story buildings to the south of the project. The project itself will be a five-story hotel, so it'll be the tallest along this stretch of road. The property is zoned Nora 5, and it's not a TDRs incentive-receiving area. So this is a close-up of the site area to be abandoned. And abandoning this, this portion of the street will allow it to be, the hotel to be constructed, as you'll see in the next couple of slides. It's only this blue area, starting on the western side of North Railroad Avenue, terminating at the FEC right-of-way. This portion that overlaps will be incorporated into the hotel's site plan, bringing total site acreage to 1.14 acres in size. The hotel itself will not be constructed in that overlapped area. This will remain kind of street area to provide access to the hotel and to the service area that's planned for the back. So the hotel will be everything south of the blue line there. The property to the north is also owned by the Nora Hotel Developer, or the Nora District Developers. So it's the same ownership. To the east is owned by the, obviously, the railroad, and all applicant, all owners who have been, who are required to provide consent for this application have. So here's a summary of the hotel project. It's a five-story, 201-room hotel with a lot of amenities, including multiple food and beverage venues. There's a rooftop pool and lounge, a spa, fitness center, and about 500 square feet of retail on the ground floor, sort of around this area of the building. The parking will be in the first floor mezzanine, so when you enter into the garage, you'll go up, there's one level of parking. This is a view of the project from the east. This is kind of what it'll look like once it's completed. As you can see, the parking is completely concealed behind the building's facade, and there will be, the retail will be sort of around this area here, and on the south end of the hotel will be a ground-floor restaurant. There'll be outdoor dining that will have, that will be underneath the colonnade on the south side, which you'll see in the next slide. So here's a view from the southeast, so you can get a sense of what that colonnade will look like, where there'll be some indoor, outdoor dining opportunities. So as mentioned, the property, or the applicant obtained an appraisal, and through discussions with staff, it would, the agreed-upon amount of the appraisal would be $170,979.07, which the applicant has already conveyed to the city, or compensated the city for that amount. The applicant, or the staff recommends approval of their requests, and on June 12th, the Downtown Action Committee also approved the site plan and recommended approval of the abandonment. Again, here are the 10 standards, but I just wanted to mention three important ones, I think, stand out, this, which would be number one, this is a street segment, a street segment that hasn't been used in many years. The properties to the north and south have been unused for many, many years, and so it has not been an active part of the street system, but it will now be activated with the hotel, and, because it will provide, again, access to it and the service area. And point number five, the right-of-way will be repaved and landscaped, and will actually provide access and be activated. And then point number nine, all the, condition number two in the resolution requires that the applicant provide an easement over the northern 40 feet of the right-of-way, because there's existing utilities underground that will not be relocated, and the applicant has agreed to do so. So again, this is another project. They already have building permits in process. They're excited to move on to the next stage so they can start breaking ground, and this is like, one of the last steps that they need to take as far as approvals go, to be able to get their permits issued and shovels in the go, to be able to get their permits issued and shovels in the ground. I think, we think this will be a great project for the city, and we feel it'll have a really positive impact on Nora and the Brailsford Park District. So with that, we certainly hope you'll vote to approve this one as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Excuse me. I just wanted to make sure I understood, in the picture where you had the blue box and the yellow, so in the blue box, that's what's being abandoned?
Yes.
Or proposed for abandonment? But you're saying that in that blue box, that will stay just a road, but it will be for access to the hotel?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, Chris Kimmely, Senior Urban Designer. You've heard the request. I'll try to keep this brief here. Again, this is just an aerial of that little terminus portion of the 11th Street right-of-way that is subject to the abandonment. The request does comply with all the standards of chapter 78. And just to note here that Anderson and Carr, who conducted the appraisal on behalf of the city, originally appraised this section of right-of-way just shy of $285,000. However, due to the area that is encumbered by the drainage and utility easements, which will remain in place over this property, the value has been adjusted to the $170,000 that you see today. Mailers and sign postings have been sent out to all property owners within 500 feet of the project site, as well as the, or sign posting there on the property. And on June 12th, the Downtown Action Committee did recommend approval of the site plan, as well as made a recommendation in favor of the abandonment with a final vote of six to zero. Staff does comply the, or agree that the right-of-way abandonment is in compliance with the criteria in section 78-217 of the Code of Ordinances, and we recommend approval of the resolution. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions for staff? All right. Any questions, comments generally on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 133-24 based upon the findings that the right-of-way is no longer needed for any public purpose and that the abandonment complies with the criteria set forth in section 78-217 of the city's Code of Ordinances.
Very good. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We will now turn to the part of the meeting where we hear from the general public. We do have three cards. And as I call out your name, please start working your way toward the podium. Aaron Clemmons, Michael Cleveland, and Angela Ogborne. Mr. Clemmons?
Aaron Clemmons, 1801 North Flagler Drive, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33407. Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor Keith James. My name's Aaron Clemmons, president and founder of Save-A-Teen, nonprofit organization. I just want to give you some updates. I've been talking to you guys about it last couple of commission meetings, just give you some new updates of what we're doing, some new positive developments, and what we have, some breakthroughs coming in. Just to let you know, so remember I talked about the 60/40 program, Commissioners, regarding the business owners, regarding like, for example, you have a $100 bar bill? Everyone asks, would you like to donate to Save-A-Teen, like bartenders, servers, retail person, like retailers or whatever, and so on? So basically, what that is, is, for example, the business owners give 40% of each month from whatever they collect from their customers, they make a donation to us, and they keep 60. And then, so incentivize them to put Save-A-Teen in there. So we have that. We talked to the regional manager, Jabele. They have 25 locations, they're thinking about putting us in, which is very good. We just got our first global company sponsoring Save-A-Teen officially. Toshiba Business Solutions, out of Toshiba, out of Japan, global company. Matt Barnes, President of Southeast Region, is on our advisory board. That's good news. It's up to you guys there. We also have another global company called Douglas Solomon Real Estate. Robert Kemp, he's a top sales real estate guy on Palm Beach Island, he was able to get us in, and their official sponsors is Save-A-Teen as well. We, I emailed all the Commissioners about setting up separate meetings with you guys to go over our Rolodex, regarding our deck, regarding all the plans that we plan on doing. We want to build a virtual, raise money to build a virtual teen center in West Palm, virtually online. We could do like, financial courses for teens, AI job training, teledoc, and so on, so transform and get the kids, teens, ready for the next generation of working, become productive citizens of society. We also want to build teen centers. We'd like to do a teen center in West Palm Beach, food, shelter, housing, job resources, trade, training, trades for, training like welding and stuff like that as well. And I would appreciate all the Commissioners and Mayor, get back to me so we can schedule meetings and talk about all this and present that, because I love to, I would love to have a whole commission on our advisory board and support our cause. This is great. We're gonna change lives all throughout the country, starting here in West Palm Beach with our own people. Thank you, Mayor Keith James, Commission, and hopefully you guys can get back to me and we can schedule a meeting with every one of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michael Cleveland?
Good evening again, Michael Cleveland, West Palm. Several administrations ago, there was an individual working for the water department that claimed that there was enough water, that he can provide enough water for the city for durations. It was announced sometime last week that the mayor is requesting that citizens conserve water. I think that's a bit unfair, because those citizens that live in high-rise and work in office buildings, they use as much water as they want to without being mowed. This, this, this is really geared toward those individuals that pay over the bill by the meter. That's unfair. At the last commission meeting, Mayor, you stated, the incident at the Pulse nightclub anniversary, June, there's been a number of killings in this, in this country from '84 to date. I think it's about 13 to 14 that occurred in the month of June. I didn't hear you anything, mention anything about those individuals, because I consider those to be more important than the Pulse. In addition to that, that group of people are being survived by the news media and politicians. They stop advertising, I'm sure that would die down pretty soon. Everybody, nobody stands on it. I don't like nothing being forced on me by that group. Also, Mayor, I would ask that if anybody in here can tell me how fair it is for, you to proclaim certain dates, or months, or weeks as private groups and not remember our groups, black groups, that were very important, even should be to you, because had it not been for the Civil Rights Act of '64, those groups would not even be recognized or not even come forward to be recognized. So I'd appreciate in the future, Mayor, when you recognize, as I've asked before, for them, please remember us. Thank you very much. Enjoy your day.
Thank you very much. Angela Ogborne? Ogborne?
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm back again today in hopes that as a North End resident, that our city will help us with coming up with a plan. We want to ensure that our community thrives and retains its historic charm, and it's crucial that administration and staff review a master plan for the North End of Flagler Drive, rather than being overshadowed by incompatible and indiscriminate development. Residents had attended a earlier this month meeting with a developer and were visibly disappointed in the incoming developer's lack of willingness to support and the wants and needs of the surrounding community, which will be impacted by the new development in our community. We need a thoughtful, cohesive development that respects our historic district. We look forward to meeting with city administration and staff and developers and hope we can come up with a plan that works for everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That is the final card that we have, so now we'll turn to comments from the deists. We'll begin with you, Madam President.
Thank you so much, and thank you to Northwood Harper Association representatives for coming out again. I shared those with you, but just for those listening, because I have received emails from residents that I don't ever hear from, and some I do sometimes hear from, about this request for a plan. And as you guys know, we've had preliminary discussions with city staff, and they're current work, currently working on evaluating the existing and future potential conditions based on the current zoning. And once that initial assessment is completed, they intend to discuss options with the community for height and other restrictions, and as such, I'll be getting with you all for possible dates and moving forward. And I hope it's, it's done. I know every, there's a lot going on at the city right now, but I know it's important, and I know you guys are constantly being contacted for more developments, so it's still on our radar and we're working on it. I just wanted to give an FYI, this is early, but the Coleman Park Renaissance Apartments, being developed by the Neighborhood, Neighborhood Renaissance, they are gonna be starting their early leasing on their affordable one, two, and three-bedroom apartments, starting in December, and that will be along Tamaran Avenue, and I'm very excited about it. It'll be commercial activation on the bottom and affordable apartments on the top. And so if you have any questions, please reach out to that organization. It's called Neighborhood Renaissance, or if you'd like, you can contact my office and we can connect you with a representative from that organization. And finally, I'm sure you're probably going to mention this, Mayor, but Barbecue Brews and Blues in the Historic Northwest is this Saturday, June 29th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., and I will be joining the judges for the barbecue cook-off, and I'm very excited about that. And that is all I have for this evening. Happy Fourth, everybody.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Mayor. I won't mention Barbecue Brews and Blues, but I do think everyone should go. It's such a fun event every year. So thank you for mentioning that, Commissioner Ward. This Thursday night, June 27th, between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m., the city is looking for input on the reimagining of the north side of the Great Lawn. This is something that's been in the works for several years, talking about adding a play area and revitalizing the visitor's center into maybe a restaurant or a cafe. So we're looking for input. It will be closed by night, again, between 6:00 and 9:00 p.m. on the north side of the Great Lawn. And if you have any questions, you can contact artlife@wpb.org. And finally, I just wanted to mention, in 2003, the city became the first city in Florida to adopt a complete streets policy. And at that time, we were actually only one of six cities nationwide with such a policy. I was looking today at the Smart Growth America website, and they actually list year by year when cities actually adopted a plan. And we are just one of six cities in 2003 in the whole country. So that is, I think, we were early adopters, and the next city in Florida was Miami, and not until 2009. So I'm very proud that we are always looking at the needs of all users when we're working on designing our streets, making sure that it's safe for walkers and bikers and people that are taking the train and, and buses and cars, and particularly our most vulnerable users. And we have included this, complete streets, in our comprehensive plan. But in the last 20 years since we first adopted this, the guidance has changed on what the policy should look like, and many municipalities in Palm Beach County now have adopted their own standalone plans and have won awards on those plans. And so I'm hoping that we can kind of circle back and look at adopting our own policy that's a standalone policy. It's sort of a formality at this point, because I think the actions that we've taken speak a lot louder than any words on a page. But because we've been leaders and pioneering this policy, not only in the state but in the country, and definitely in our county, I'm hoping it's something that we can continue to be recognized and just take another look at how we can have a standalone policy and possibly on our website and, and the T-Pay website. So I'm happy to continue talking about this to anyone who might have questions, but I just wanted to put it out there for future discussion, and that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Boudouzi?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be joining the Rotary of West Palm Beach tomorrow, where I will have the honor of swearing in their officers for the 2024-25 year, and I will be expressing our gratitude for all that they do for the residents of West Palm Beach. Also, I'd like to send my best wishes to my daughter Alexa and the 400 third, fourth, and fifth graders who headed out early this morning for a sleepover, a sleepaway camp with a family church downtown, to spend some time with their friends and participate in some exciting activities and to grow in their spirituality. That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you, Mayor. I left for each of the Commissioners and Mayor and Administrator this booklet from Discover the Palm Beaches. This is their Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Report. I sit on the board for the TDC, representing this body, and I was just really struck by this, and they gave a presentation at our board meeting where they talked about groups who come and look at not only our county, but specifically our city, and who are asking for this type of report, and how that sometimes we lose the opportunity to host people in our city, and, and the importance of tourism that is inclusive. And so I was really pleased to see that they have produced this piece, and then also pleased to see so many West Palm Beach business owners highlighted here. You'll see Pernue is in here, as well as Salento Coffee, so a number of others represented, and I just think it says good things about our city being inclusive and accessible to everyone. And then I also just wanted to mention and share with everybody here that we've been having some stakeholder meetings in Dreher Park, and it's really been great to be a part of this and to help them to coordinate their efforts. But as you know, we've just approved the ability for the Boys and Girls Club to build a new center in Dreher Park, so the Cox Science Center, the zoo, the Boys and Girls Club, the Neighborhood Association, the county, and of course, many city departments are represented here. And it's, it is a really amazing opportunity for all these stakeholders to share what's going on so that no one works in a silo. And I'm just proud to have that continue on and, and hope to share other good news, because they're working together to apply for federal grants and sharing other programs that are going on in, in each of those organizations. So I just wanted to say thank you, and also wanted to tell our city attorney, she's looking awfully sharp in that jacket today. I think we might have the same one on. So thank you so much.
Thank you for distributing this booklet, Commissioner. I didn't, I wasn't sure where it came from, but now I know. Thank you. Just a few things. Calling all young adults, 15 to 24-years-old, who want to join the movement for a more sustainable future in West Palm Beach. Are you ready to act on climate change and help the environment? So through a grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies, youth and youth-serving organizations can apply for a grant of up to $5,000 to support actions that focus on environmental change. While we, as a community, may be divided on climate change, what is an undisputable fact is that 100% of our youth will be affected by climate change. So for complete details, include important dates regarding the Youth Climate Action Fund, and please visit wpb.org/green. As was previously mentioned, Barbecue Brews and Blues is returning for its ninth year in West Palm Beach's historic northwest. Join the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency at Heart and Soul Park on Saturday, June 29th, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. for an evening filled with live music, delicious food, craft beer, thrilling competitions, and so much more. This has been, is also a great opportunity for the community to learn about the latest CRA projects underway in the historic northwest. Admission is free and open to the public. Also, the city of West Palm Beach will soon host its 36th Annual Fourth on Flagler Celebration with a festive "Where Wishes Come Red, White, and True" theme. I didn't write that. But it's, it's pretty snazzy. The highly anticipated event is the largest waterfront Independence Day celebration in South Florida, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Thursday, July 4th. Enjoy live music, family-friendly activities, food and drink vendor in the city's downtown area along Flagler Drive. There will be a fireworks, fireworks display by Pyrotechnico, which will ignite our intracoastal waterway and begin around 9:09 p.m. So, "Where Wishes Come Red, White, and True." Come on down. I'm also pleased to announce that the city is bringing back its popular Soul in the City Jazz Experience. The concert series will feature a lineup of top musicians from across the country. Soul in the City will begin on the 3rd Wednesday of July and continue through September from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Lakefront Pavilion on the West Palm Beach waterfront. General admission tickets are $30, and table reservations for four or more are $45 per person. For complete details and to purchase tickets, please visit For complete details and the purchase tickets, please visit wpb.org/jazz. And that's all I have. God bless each and every one of you. God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. Good night, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.